Maybe that will help. Okay.
Okay, public comment period. Any member of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you are requested to limit your comments to three minutes per member or five minutes per group. The public comment time is not for questions and answers. It is your time to express your views. Ensure there is adequate public comment time. Please provide your name, contact information, and any affiliation prior to the meeting by contacting the board assistant at nine seven zero eight seven eight nine five seven five. If you would like to submit written comments, please contact the board assistant. If any member of the public would like to comment at this time, please state your name, contact information, and affiliation for the record. Bobby.
I'm Bobby.
Up here, please. Thank you, so we can get you on record.
My name is Bobby Tanners, five six four Larry Lane, Meker, Colorado. And I'd just like to thank you for putting IMC under new business. A very important issue of moving our health service district board back to a seven person board, like the voters of Eastern Rio Blanco County first voted for back in two thousand and six when the district was first created. This has been a big concern for me and others since two thousand and twenty one because PNC made a resolution to change the will of the people by illegally, as there is no Colorado revised statute allowing the board to go from seven members to five, a flagrant disregard of the will of the people and made the resolution to amend their bylaws. And on August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty one, PNC sent a resolution, along with a letter to then Commissioners Gary Moyer, who was under recall, Jeff Rector, who had resigned but had yet had not yet stepped down and newly elected Ty Gates, who later became the maintenance manager out there at PNC while working as a commissioner. Commissioners never did discuss the resolution nor did they put it on publicly. They didn't discuss it publicly back in two thousand and twenty one, nor did they put the resolution on the agenda to determine if it was a material modification of the district's service plan, move from seven to five members. With no response from the commissioners, after forty five days, PNC Attorney Christina Marney submitted a motion to the district court to accept the amendment to their bylaws, reducing the number of board members from seven to five. Motion was denied by the Honorable Patrick Norton on April twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty two. Yet PNC ignored the court order and amended their bylaws April twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty two, two weeks before an election with seven people on the ballot running for three seats. You as Rio Blanco County Commissioners have the authority to correct this immediately by appointing two two members who we recently had an election and appointing the next two highest vote getters from the May twenty sixth election to get us back to a seven person board like the people, the voters of Rio Blanco County originally voted for. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Okay. And one to the.
I'll check and see if there's anyone online that should public comment.
Is anybody online that needs to do a public comment?
Somebody wanting to join. There's somebody who looks like they might join. He said there is not.
Okay.
One to join is the AI piece.
Oh, okay. So the, this is the tentative agenda which includes all information available as of September fifth, two thousand and twenty five. The final tentative agenda will be posted at the Rio Blanco County Historic Courthouse, five fifty five Main Street, Meker, Colorado, and at the Rangelay Town Hall, two oh nine East Main Street, Rangelay.
Chair, I would move to approve the agenda for September tenth, two thousand and twenty five with one change. If we could move Agenda Item Three in, which is the NRCS, Natural Resources Conservation Service Letter up to Business Item A. We'll put it at the very beginning of Business. We have Todd Bolt on the phone with us as soon as we can get to it.
So we're not going to make it. We're going to move in up to the beginning.
Yes.
Just to keep everything straight.
Okay.
Okay.
You have a second, I guess, huh?
I'm going to second that motion. Any discussion? I just want to note that Jennifer is not here today. She's in Washington DC doing Rio Blanco County's business.
She's not going in virtually.
No, she's not. She's in the middle of a meeting with some senators right now. Um, would you please call the roll?
Switch fields. Aye.
Aye. Good, so we are going to do line item Business N, which is.
Consent items.
Oh yeah, I have to do the consent items, I'm sorry. Oh yeah.
So Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the below list items of the consent agenda. That includes payroll management report for August fifteenth and twenty ninth, accounts payable management reports for June twenty fifth, or June of twenty five, special meeting minutes for July twenty third, special meeting minutes for August second, meeting minutes for August twelfth, special meeting minutes for September second, special meeting minutes for September fourth, motor vehicle, DMV report for August twenty five, and DHS, their EBT register and warrant register for August twenty fifth.
I'm going to second that motion. Any discussion? You please call the roll.
Switch field. Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now we are going to move on to Business N, which is Consideration of a Request to Clint Evans Natural Resources Conservation Service requesting federal assistance under the provisions of Section two sixteen of the Flood Control Act of nineteen fifty, Public Law eighty one, day five one six, or Section four oh three of the Agriculture Credit Act of nineteen seventy eight, Public Law ninety five, days three three four, to restore damages sustained in Rio Blanco County by the Lee and Elk RBX Rio Blanco County Fire on August twenty fifth.
So I had asked, NRCS, so Todd Bolt is with remotely today to be able to explain to us a little bit about what this would look like.
Stay with NCRS.
NRCS is Natural Resource Conservation Service. And Vicki, I have an extra sheet that Todd shared with us.
Okay.
If you want it, um. Okay, give her that one. And so I had had a brief conversation about this and have very vague knowledge of it due to conservation district work in the past. But I think that Todd will go over kind of what the program is briefly and then what our role would be if we were to be a sponsor of it.
Lord's yours, Todd.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks for having me. My name is Todd Bolt. I work for the Natural Resources Conservation Service. I'm located in Fort Collins. I cover the entire state of Colorado for NRCS, and I manage the Emergency Watershed Protection Program, which is the program you were referencing with all of that program statutory authorities. Also manage the Public Law five sixty six, which is our watershed operations, and then also our dam rehab. You guys have been working with Clinton Witten. Is that correct, Callie?
Yes.
And Clinton, Clinton works for me. He's located out of Steamboat. He's been up and around taking a look at the some of the issues that are going on post-fire with the rainfall and the runoff that's occurred. So to get right into it, the objective of the Emergency Watershed Protection Program, and I'm sharing my screen. I don't know how well you can see that. But hopefully you have a sheet of paper that you can follow along with. The Emergency Watershed Protection Program is set up to relieve imminent hazards to life and property caused by a watershed impairment. And a watershed impairment is a fire, and then we have floods. The watershed is impaired. It cannot act the way it's supposed to act. So the primary goals of EWP are to reduce erosion, sedimentation, and the threat from future flooding to life and property. The key item here is, and I'm bringing this up, hopefully you can see that implementation or the flow chart fairly well. I'm not going to get into great details of this. I think what you're really interested in and and correct me if I'm wrong. You guys want to know what you have to do once you request assistance. And so, but the process is you have to, a sponsor has to request assistance from, to our agency, and our boss is Clint Evans. That's why you referenced him. And you have to send in a request to him and say, hey, we need assistance under this program due to this fire and the flooding that we're getting. And that, you have to do that within sixty days, and then we, we have some time to come in and help you out and assess the damages and come up with a cost estimate and see what everything's going to take to get, protect life and property. So you need to be, a sponsor needs to be a unit of government, which you are, so we're good there. The responsibility of the sponsors, you must request assistance in writing to my boss Clint Evans, who is the State Conservationist for NRCS in Colorado. You must let the public know that this program is available. And this is the one big thing to remember here is NRCS in this program works through the sponsor to provide technical and financial assistance to address the issues that are occurring on private property and also any public infrastructure that might be impacted post-fire. So all of that means is you guys are in charge of working with the landowners. We provide the guidance and technical and financial assistance to get the work done to you so that you can help the private landowners or take care of the protection of infrastructure, county roads, county infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera. So we put after, after we get the request from you, then we initiate what's called a Damage Survey Report Team, which would be NRCS and Rio Blanco personnel to go out and take a look at what the potential or already damaged sites are, what it's going to take to protect those sites, come up with a cost estimate, and then therefore request assistance from national headquarters in terms of dollars that would help pay for the installation of this stuff. You guys are required to get access or permission from the landowners to do the work. So John Q. Public out there, you're required to go out and say, hey, we want to do this on your property to protect your house. Are you okay with that? And you have to get permission to do that. If there's a permit that's required from the feds or the state or the local government, you're required to get those permits. If you go out and hire a private company to do all of this work that might come from EWP, you guys have to administer the contract to do that with that contractor. We oversee that to make sure that everything's being done correctly. But you're responsible for requesting bids, requesting or approving bids, and then following the cost and making sure that everything by that contractor is done according to NRCS standards and specs with us overseeing and helping you out. The big number is we pay for seventy five percent of the cost. The sponsor has to come up with twenty five percent. As I talked to Callie about this, we prefer cash. But if you don't have cash, you can offset that with in-kind services. And we can get into the gory details of that, but that just basically means labor, machinery, time by the county can be used by doing the work and be used to offset the cash requirement. We have to agree on what those costs are prior to getting to work. As I told Callie, you know, some guy working a shovel, we're not going to pay him a hundred bucks an hour. That's all there is to it, you know? Whatever, whatever you would charge for that from a county perspective, that's probably acceptable. And then after that, the only other responsibility you have after paying the bills, we, it's a reimbursable program. So you pay the bills, we reimburse, you submit for reimbursement. We don't give you the cash upfront to go out and hire these contractors and pay them and everything else. You gotta get reimbursed. We are pretty good about getting reimbursed within a couple of weeks, so that's no issue. And then after it's all said and done and the work is installed, the sponsor is responsible for the operation and maintenance of the items that we put in. So if we put in some flood barrier bags to protect a house, there's another event that comes along and damages or moves those flood barrier bags, then the county is responsible to operate and maintain those as they were designed to protect that house. And then I get into a lot of details of the damage survey report, priority list, eligibility sort of stuff. You can read through this. Here's a matrix that we have on what's high or low risk sort of stuff and some other stuff. But that's, that's the gist of it for you guys to consider. The first step again to review is you have to request assistance. And Callie, I think we had, you were having a conversation with Clinton on this, just to assure you, requesting assistance does not commit the county to anything. All it does is initiate NRCS to come out and start working with you and whoever your partners might be to do a damage survey assessment. And that basically is coming up with what are we going to do to protect life and property and how much is it going to cost? And then once we get that done, you guys look it over, and if you're okay with it, you sign the damage survey report. We submit that to national headquarters. We get money back from them. And then what happens is we put together an agreement between NRCS and the county. And it says the county will do this, NRCS will do that, and here's some timelines that we need to meet. And that's basically how the program works. See, Callie, I told you it was simple.
Okay, yeah, right, Todd. I know better than this.
Anyway, it's, it's simpler than a lot of programs you might be involved with, that's for sure.
Yep, exactly. So just, um, so the county could send in this letter, get things rolling. That gives us time to work with the conservation district. And then if the conservation district decided to be the sponsor, they could do that. Is that correct?
Well, technically, if the county, if the, if the county is going to submit and then the conservation district's going to be the sponsor, realistically, we should be getting a request from the conservation district sometime within that sixty day timeframe. Okay?
Okay.
Right? I, because I, 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 I need whoever's going to be the sponsor, they got to ask for, they got to ask for help.
Well, the elephant in the room here is the twenty five percent.
Yeah, I know.
That the county is going to have to come up with or the conservation district. Yes, Vicki?
I think another part of the elephant in the room will be the management of that. You're going to have to increase staffing. We don't have existing staffing to be able to manage that. Plus, I think you're going to end up adding grant management to this piece. So I think that definitely will have to be part of that consideration. Not only do you have management process of that.
So let, let me back up just a little bit. So there's, let's say we go forward with this. Let's say it's a million bucks, okay? Just a nice, easy number to work with. So we're going to provide seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of construction money. And then the county's on the hook for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right? So that's for the construction money. There's two pots of money. One of them is called FA, Financial Assistance. That's the construction money. That's that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal funds coming in, and you're on the hook for two fifty. The other side of that is what's called technical assistance dollars. Hold on. Technical assistance dollars. Those are TA dollars. And that's based on a calculation of fifteen percent of the estimated construction cost. So we estimate through the damage survey report that it's going to cost a million bucks to do this, all this work that might need to be done in Rio Blanco County. It's TA, Technical Assistance, is calculated at fifteen percent of construction cost. So that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of TA that comes in with the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of FA of federal dollars. So you, we put a portion of that hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus all of the financial assistance, the seven hundred and fifty, we put that into the agreement. The reason I'm telling you this, you can use those TA dollars to reimburse employees or, or have us pay for employees administering these contracts, administering this agreement, and doing all of the administrative work that needs to be done to implement this project. You can also use those funds to go out and hire an engineering firm to man, or a consulting firm to manage this project for you. So it's not going to be money from a project management standpoint. It's not going to be money out of your pocket because we will reimburse you for those administrative costs at one hundred percent of those costs as long as they're reasonable, right? So you can't be charging us five hundred bucks an hour from, for somebody running a copy machine. You see what I'm saying? So those are the two, the two funds that come into this thing is the FA, which is the construction, which you're on the hook for twenty five percent or in-kind, which can offset that. And then also the TA, which is the hundred and fifty I was talking about. Does that make any sense or is that kind of clear?
Well, but the other thing, Todd, I think you're making it sound like the county has to actually provide the money. And my understanding is the state, we would work with other partners to get that twenty five percent. It doesn't have to come out of county's coffers. It can come from the state, the Colorado River District, or others. Is that true?
That's true. You can work out an agreement and have an agreement with them for them to reimburse you or supply you money. So that's fine. We're good with that.
And we have time to figure that out. Once we send this letter, whether it's the county or the district requesting the assistance, while you're doing the damage survey report, and then you give us the dollar figure that it would be, we can be working with those other partners. I say we, whether it's county or district, to determine if they will pay the other twenty five percent before we ever sign your agreement that then would kick off the two hundred and twenty days. Is that true?
That is true. If, that is true. To, there, there's, yeah, I'm just going to say that's true right now. We'll keep it simple.
So I think we, as the county, need to have this conversation with the conservation district. And the reason I'm saying that, you, you know this better than I, but typically across the state, it's the conservation district that does this when NRCS comes in with an EWP. Is that accurate?
Uh, no, it's not.
Okay.
So we go just the most recent history, the East Troublesome Fire down in Grand County. Northern Water was the main sponsor above Windy Gap Reservoir, and then below Windy Gap, Grand County was the sponsor. So we had two specific sponsors for two specific areas. The Middle Park Conservation District was heavily involved with that from a landowner outreach situation, but they did not provide, they were not a sponsor, so to speak. They were just supportive of Northern Water and supportive of Grand County. On the Cameron Peak Fire, it was City of Greeley and Laramie County that were the two main sponsors for the work that got taken care of off the Cameron Peak Fire. Callwood Fire, that was Boulder County.
Okay.
So I, I, I can go on and on. The one in Glenwood, it was the city of Glenwood Pine, Pine Gulch was Mesa County, and then we also had Garfield County on that too. So it's you that the conservation districts typically have not been involved in recent memory, going back to when I started working on EWP full-time, two thousand and fifteen.
Okay. Thank you.
So the twenty five percent, if the county's budget right now is not in very good shape. If we decide that we want to pursue this, can we get the private landowners to kick in the twenty five percent? And is that an option?
You can do that. It is. Yes, it is an option, and it is a royal pain.
But try and collect it.
Um.
And not, not only that, not only that, let me, let me, we did this on the Spring Creek Fire with Werfenell County. They, they were adamant that they wanted to have the landowners have some skin in the game. And so whenever there was a change order during construction, so we had a hundred feet of this, it was going to cost a thousand bucks to do this, whatever we were doing down there. Now, when there was a change order, now we're going to do a hundred and twenty five feet of whatever it was, and that increased the cost. All of a sudden, we got to go through this. The county had to go through this whole process to work with the landowner for the increase in cost for the additional twenty five feet. And it just turned into a nightmare from an administrative standpoint. It really did. And if you want to take that on and you think that's worth it, go ahead, but you have to. Uh go ahead, but you have to get permission from that landowner first and foremost. To do the work. And then you're going to have to have that follow up conversation with them. Okay. Now we come out and say this thing's going to cost, you know, five thousand dollars. You're on the hook for twenty five percent. So that's what? A thousand bucks, let's say, or twelve hundred and fifty bucks. You're on the hook for twelve hundred and fifty bucks, landowner, to get this work to protect your property. And you're going to have to have some agreement, some process all set up. For them to pay you twelve hundred and fifty dollars. And then, like I just said, if it changes, all of a sudden now the cost went up to six grand or seventy five hundred. Uh whatever, for whatever reason, because nothing ever goes in. You know, right as it was designed. Uh and there's always a little something going on there. Um. Then all of a sudden, we got to get the landowner permission that they're on the hook for an additional X amount of dollars. So, like I said, in 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 hindsight. I would not recommend doing that unless you are adamant that you need the landowners to chip in on this thing.
Well, it's not necessarily the adamant that they need to chip in. It's where else are we going to get the money?
Yeah.
I understand.
Um I appreciate I appreciate your input.
So Todd, just one last thing, and then we better move on to our other stuff. Um. So that sixty days to get the letter in there is from when?
When you get uh access, basically, so. When it's safe to go into the area to assess the damages, I'm assuming that's already occurred. I saw some emails going back that that was August twenty fifth. Is that correct?
Yes.
So August twenty fifth would put us somewhere in October, right? Say October twenty fourth, whatever the day would be. Yeah, so it it's it's based on when access is allowed. To get in to do this damage survey assessment.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate all the info. I know we will have plenty of other questions. But thank you.
You're welcome. Do I sign off right now?
I think you're good to go with that.
All right, you guys have a great meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, bye bye.
So.
Lots of food to pick up.
So you don't want to. Serize this dragon?
I don't think we do just yet. I think we have some more conversation of who submits that.
Okay. Very good. Okay, good discussion. So we're going to move on now to business line B.
Mister Chair, I would move ratification of contract amendment with Kenneth E. Harrison Family Trust. Amending the contract to end one month. Early on September thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
I will second that. So what this is, is this, this was a uh when we were looking for a. Um. Accounting.
Finance director.
Finance director, thank you. Finance director. We, there was no place in Meeker to live. And we were aware of that. And. When we started uh uh doing. Applications and stuff. We thought that it would be a uh. Benefit if we had a house for this person to live in when they got here. We went out on a limb and rented a house to do that. We cannot find a finance director. Um. And so we. Rented a house and didn't fill it up. Now we're trying, going to end that contract early because we don't. Nobody's using it. So we're going to end that contractor. That's what this is about. Um. I'm going to second it. Did I second it?
I think you did. I think we're good to call.
Okay, so we need to roll call, please.
Hi.
Over to him.
Hi. Okay, let's move on to line item B.
Mister Chair, I would move to ratify um an MOU with Yampa Valley Community Foundation. An existing five oh one C three organization. As fiscal agent for the purpose of recovery efforts for the Lee and Elk fires.
I'm going to second that. This is a uh. People wanted to start making donations to the victims of the Lee and Elk fire. And the county entered into a. A contractor, an MOU. With Yampa Valley Community Foundation to accept all of the money. And then go through a process to distribute that money. And we were able to uh. Put some people on the board that decided where that money goes. And I think it's going to work out pretty good. It kind of puts. Our intention was to funnel the money to one place and then distribute it instead of having money spread all over the place. Their intention.
And I might. I would like to, because in that contract, it says that they will provide us, I think it's monthly or quarterly, how much they've got. We need to follow up with that and make sure that we see that. I haven't seen it. You may have.
Um I don't think that uh they have distributed any monies yet. But yes, we'll find out follow up with them.
Good.
Please call the role.
Over to him?
Hi.
Speech to.
Hi.
Okay, let's move on to line item C.
So Mister Chair, I would move the um to approve. Under CRS thirty one dash one dash nine oh two. Um point five one B of whether the certified copy. Of the resolution of Eastern Rio Blanco County Health Service District. Doing businesses Pioneer Medical Center. To increase the board from five members to seven members. Is a material modification of the district's approved service plan.
I'll second that. So let me explain. Where the county. Stands on this and and what our deal is. And I agree with Bobby that that uh. When with your comments earlier, the way that that was gone done was was uh, for lack of a better word, sloppy. The judge. Turned it down because of the the statute that they used to do it. She had no authority to do it under that statute. And so she just said, she didn't turn it down, the 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 board. Number down. She just said, I have no authority to do anything, and so I'm denying your motion. Is what she did. So that didn't do anything to. Uh the the service plan. Then it came to the county and the county uh. For some reason, didn't. They said that it didn't look like it would affect the service plan that they had filed. When a special district is formed, they have to. File a service plan with the county. And and uh they have to maintain that service plan. And the county at that time determined that they. That would not affect the service plan. So they didn't respond. Then uh. The hospital board then decided to go back. Well, then the hospital board did it through a uh some other way, uh by changing their bylaws or something like that. And uh. So they went to a five man board. I don't know that that was ever. Legally a five man board, but that's not our issue. The issue now is that they. Used a statute to go back to a seven man board. The statute that they used to do that. Does not give us authority to appoint people. It does not give the hospital district authority to point people. It has to go to an election. The statute that they that their lawyer used. To go back to a seven man board. It has to go to either a special election or a regular election. So we have no. The way that the the hospital. Filed for this, we, there's nothing we can do. And and there's nothing the hospital can do. It has to go to a special election unless. They file something different. So that's. The story.
If I may.
Yes.
But. We're saying. We, there is no material impacts to go from five to seven. So we are supporting that with this motion, correct?
This motion is saying that they. There's, this does not affect the service plan that they filed with the county of rec for record. And so we don't have a problem with it. And I wish it was different, but. Because of the statute that the lawyer used, we have. Nothing we can do, our hand or tie. Did I second that?
You did.
Okay.
Over to him.
Hi.
Speech to you.
Hi.
Okay. Let's move on to line item D.
Mister Chair, I would move um approval of a renewal. Of an agreement of agreement for services with Redlands Accounting for interim finance director services.
I will second that. Um as I stated before, we are having a hard time finding a uh finance director. And so we contract with uh. Uh Lisa, who is the owner of Redlands Accounting, to help us get through the these hard times. And she's doing a really good job. And we need to retain her until we can get this position filled. We do have some uh. Uh resumes in now and and are going through the process. So hopefully. We can get this taken care of. But until then, we need to. Retain Lisa, the uh Redland Services. For the interim. Would you please call the role? Hi.
Hi.
Okay, let's move on to line item B, Business E.
So Mister Chair, I would move um to approve the core service plan for the second year. Of a three year plan for human services.
I will second that. Um. I'm going to have to get somebody else to help me out with that. Vicky, would you help me out with uh line item E?
Which is the uh core services plan for human services. Okay. So that particular plan is something that comes up annually. And what that is, is what DHS has to do for minimum um. DHS contracts. So core services would be like your um. Child interaction uh therapies, um. If there's alcohol counseling, if there's um, it's it's. Like when a DHS plan comes about, it's how do you get the family reunited? That's what the core services plan is. And the state gives us an appropriation of money for that. And this is the second year of that particular plan.
Very good. Would you please call the role? Hi.
Hi.
Good. Let's move on to line item Business F.
Mister Chair, I would move approval of the twenty twenty five RBC EEO, and I can never remember what that means. Meeker Airport Colter um Colter Field Winter Maintenance Policy and Procedure.
I'll second that. Eric, do you want to bring that a little bit?
Um, yes, sir. So this is a a general uh general policy. To align how Meeker Airport manages winter maintenance at the airport. Um. The intent of the policy is to clarify. The responsibilities between. The county and airport opera managers. Snow removal or winter maintenance procedures and uh. And methodology, and then also privately owned hangars and their responsibility. For the exclusive area in front of their hangars. Uh it is also intent is to align with FAA and C dot Aeronautics guidance on how as sponsors. Uh as Rio Blanco County, as a sponsor of the Meeker Airport. Manages the airport for winter maintenance. Along with how the FAA and C dot Aeronautics uh use the exclusive area for privately held hangar. The uh definition of exclusive area for privately held hangars is the fifty foot in front of. The hangar from the front face of the hangar that ties to the apron or general use area. The uh. One of the key aspects of it is that then this will then tie to ground lease expectation. Our ground lease uh terms and conditions for the hangar.
Okay, so I have some questions and I didn't get to um. Visit with you about it before. Um. And I, so one thing, just a. A what do you call a formatting question I would have before we totally finalize it. Um but I think if I'm not mistaken, those first three are basically definitions, right?
Right.
Okay, I'd put that under a definitions title, just so it's clear to somebody. That's a minor detail. Um under exclusive use. At it, I understand it exactly the way that you said it, but do I see in here anything that says that there is that fifty foot in front of this? It talks about. Exclusive use areas. May include, and I would suggest includes. But are not limited to the land footprint defined in the private. Um hangars ground lease. I guess that's where it would be, wouldn't it? It would be in that ground lease is fifty feet. Is that true? Okay. Is that the way it is in all of those current ones?
Uh. The um. Not necessarily, because any ground lease that was executed prior to twenty twenty three, when the FAA. Define their or basically. Uh started enforcing the exclusive uh use area in front hangars would not have. Uh had that definition as clearly defined.
Okay.
In those ground leases, but from moving forward from that point. New adoption of the ground lease will have that fifty foot exclusive area probably.
Okay, so would there be value in actually stating fifty foot in here since some of those don't have it yet? I don't know. I'm just thinking that might be something that would be valuable.
There's no issue with adding additional clarification in the in the policy.
Okay. I I think that would help, but I hadn't caught that it would potentially be under the ground leases, but I, if we could, makes sense to me. Um. And so under number four, county responsibilities. The county um responsible for performing the winter maintenance. So are we going to do that or is the manager going to do that?
That is up to how we manage the airport. So if. Add the larger umbrella, we're responsible as airport sponsorship to do airport uh for winter maintenance at the airports. Uh how we delegate those responsibilities within. Uh FBO and airport manager uh contracts is is up to us as long as somebody's covering winter maintenance. So it's ultimately our responsibility, however, we have the ability to delegate.
I would say the flexibility, because there may be a reason why, I mean, you're just saying the county. Owns the property. This is what we are going to do. But then we have the flexibility to say. Maybe we decided the road and bridge is going to do it, or maybe we decided someone's going to do it, or the FBO is going to do it. So. Again, it's our responsibility to digest the flexibility to figure out for what best meets the county's purposes.
Okay, and I missed when I first read it. My apologies, because it does say through its designated airport management. So that covers what my concern was. Okay. Um. So in the condo part, we're looking at doing on that new one, the bigger one, doing condos. So when, if there becomes an issue. Or backup. So that fifty feet in front of in front of each one of those, is that going to be the association's? Um responsibility? That's who we would go to if there's an issue, or would we need to go to each one of those four people if it's sold or if it's four different people?
In addressing this to the uh. The larger hangar where it's it's four bays. Uh the owner and and constructor of those hangars has elected to. Uh pursue doing a condominium association. So that they can individually sell off each hangar. With that condominium association, there'd be a declaration. And in that, it would clearly identify that the. Uh HOA or the however that's built would be the ultimate responsibility with the. uh, HOA or the, however that's billed, would be the ultimate responsibility with the, the ground leases, and then that then falls to the individual owners that would then be part of that condominium association and hangar ownership. So it'd be in shared property, and I, by no means am I an attorney.
I understand.
But as, as I, as I understand it, if we have issues, we would address it with the, the HOA or the condominium association.
Association.
And then condominium association would then need to address it with those individual owners. Again, in the, under the umbrella of keeping it defined on roles and responsibilities, yet also even flexibility amongst the parties to figure out the best solution for the operation of the airport. Um, at the end of the day, if the condominium association comes back, and let's say, for example, us as airport sponsorship, we write into the airport manager's contract as a subcontractor to the Rio Volco County, their responsibilities is to do winter maintenance for the airport. Now, it would be well within that airport manager's contract if they want to negotiate with the condominium association to come in and say, listen, it makes sense, I'm not here doing snow removal, I know what needs to be done. It makes sense for them to strike up a negotiation on how that's done. And that event, as an airport sponsor for Rio Volco County, we only care that we're meeting FAA seed obligations and good search of the airport. And so as long as snow is being removed, and that is, we understand where those full responsibilities fall, then I feel like we're properly covered under both the policy and ground leases and airport extension.
Yep, okay. Thank you, sir. So that's the only thing I would just say is that one, if we just kind of clarify the fifty foot, this is like, I would suggest we update that. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Please call the roll. Hi.
Hi. I love the way.
Okay, let's go on to, uh, business line item G.
So, can we have a conversation about this before we do a motion? Or do I need to move that we discuss it? How do I do that?
You can, I believe you would move it, second it, and then it's open for discussion, and then at that point, if you decide you want to table it, you'd make another motion to table.
Think about this, just so I guess.
On the record.
So, I want to make, so, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the EEO RBC Meeker Airport Colter Field New Building Ground Lease. Amendment number one with hangars west with amendments. And those amendments, this, I would like to have discussion first, but I think I forgot to bring it in.
Okay.
My apologies. I think I forgot to.
I'll second that, for purpose of discussion. Do you need to go get it?
I think I gotta run and get it. My apologies, guys. Must've left it sitting there. We don't run very fast, through the record.
We'll be here when you get back.
Yeah, I'm blessed up. Okay, so, the concern that I had is just, again, and it's not about what's in it. It's just I don't want it to tie us down to our snow removal. And, and I get the snow removal that's in this contract is equal to this one we just approved, right? So, my concern is a contract will supersede policy. Is that accurate? If I don't.
Policy is, what, what is your concern with the, with the lease?
I just don't want it to nail us down to that. So if later on Eric decided there was a better way or a new way to do it, I don't want it in the lease, so, or in the contract. So I'm thinking, even if we just said subject to county policy amendments in that section, or something like that, so that we're not locked in there.
Because we are not going to amend that to give them any more property.
No, it's not property. All I'm talking about is snow removal.
But the fifty feet is, it's kind of the same thing as the other deal. So by saying that you're setting that at fifty feet in the contract, we're saying this, that fifty feet is yours, no matter what, that fifty feet is yours, that is in the contract. If we decide, if for some reason Eric's now decided that it's more important for us to do something within that fifty feet that is the private property of those hangar owners, we can do that. He just can't do less than that. He can't do, and, you know, I don't feel like I'm gonna just do, you know.
I, I think, um, from backstory development, uh, set the context of terminology that's in the amendment with hangars west.
Okay, and, and I, and I wanna hear that, but just, just keep in mind, if it's not written, it's not there, right? Okay.
I would like to give context on what's, why it was written the way it was.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, prior to Hangars West constructing their hangar, which is a four hundred by hundred and twenty-five hangar, uh, which gives them four hundred feet of linear, linear, uh, space along the GA ramp with their fifty-foot exclusive use. The way, the methodology in which the county and of course by proxy the airport manager did snow removal is they would blade all the snow off the edge of the GA ramp to the east. Uh, this was concerning for Hangars West when we wrote in that they would be responsible for the winter maintenance for that fifty foot. As if we were to stay with that same methodology and the winter maintenance, we would be plowing our snow onto their apron. And it's much the same, we experienced it in our neighborhoods, right? Like the city, the city guys, they plow across the, uh, you know, through the, uh, street, and then it covers your sidewalk, and then you gotta go out and shovel it out. That's a, that's a pain for a resident. That's a, that's a significant task when you have four hundred linear feet. And so the, going back and forth in that agreement, the Hangars West just wanted to make sure that they were clear on, they understood that they're responsible for that fifty foot of winter maintenance. They just felt that it needed more definition on methodology, on how we do our winter maintenance, so we're not creating a a bigger problem than what they, what they have, uh, and clarifying, hey, look, if you guys are going to do snow removal on that fifty foot, please do it in a manner that pushes it, you know, towards the north, towards the south, but doesn't create a a bigger mound of snow than what we have to, so that we can properly adhere to our ground lease and make sure we're doing it. It's hard to write that so that we all understand it, and that's what the goal of that terminology was in there.
So, help me understand what, what, just to make it simple, what are, what are we gonna do with the snow? Are we gonna plow it onto the, them, and they're gonna plow it back? Is it, is it, are we gonna plow it off the end? Is there a designated spot for the snow and a, and a way to do it, or?
So, uh, this is a, this is a tough one, because given the storm conditions, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, landing per years, culture aviation per years, we assist with Roden Bridge on the snow removal out at the airport. And so we assist with, we have a truck that we provide culture aviation with a plow, it's a larger single axle dump truck. We do quite a bit, but you know, when you're talking thousands of feet of asphalt can get bogged down. So we do help with a, a snow blower attachment to a front end loader. So they come in, they set that up. And they usually do a border area to establish edge of runway, taxiways, that kind of thing, and then that way landing, and it, see where he needs to push the snow. I believe right now, the thinking is, is that we move that snow to the north. There's a two hundred foot area that hasn't been constructed on. Uh, we try to maximize the use of that. There is also, uh, towards the very north of it, so that's kind of northeast section at the end of, uh, the, uh, Hangars West. And then there's, uh, and then there's a section where there's no structure or anything at the very north, and so the, the attempt is push as much as you can that north, get it removed, work with Roden Bridge to get the snow blown away from. And then, and then that allows Hangars West and the other hangar owners to have the best shot of not being over, overtaken with the snow from the large aprons onto their fifty-foot exclusive. I think a lot of this is figuring out how it works. It's just everybody's, you know, Hangars West is going, and you plow this all over onto us.
Right.
We're gonna have a big problem. And, and as airport, we're going, yeah, but you also need to take care of what's going on, because we got everything else that we gotta, we gotta do out there. And so it's the, uh, the goal is to keep it broad, yet defined, and yet, and then, you know, and so if, if the language isn't fitting, I mean, we could, we could work on that, but that was intently.
I totally get and understand that intent.
Yeah, I, I think that this is gonna be a, uh, just knowing that the, the plow that he's using is a side delivery plow, and so to move that snow to the north is gonna require new equipment, or, or not new equipment, but different methods and, and different equipment. So it's gonna be a moving till they get it figured out.
And degree of storm, right?
Yes.
Exactly.
Last year wouldn't have been a problem.
Yeah, we get five or six inches, and once, it's probably gonna be gone before they actually move.
Yep.
We get a good two foot and, and, and then another foot on top of that, and, you know, that's when it, it becomes, uh, kind of logistics, uh.
And so the way that this is written is, is, uh, we're gonna work together with them, or we're gonna, uh, plow our GA ramp, and then take it all, our snow north, and they're gonna take their snow north, or how, how do you perceive that happening?
The, the intent, the way it was written is that we're, we're gonna try to get the snow, the snow to the north and to the east away from their building.
Right.
And then use any means we can to kind of keep it from creating a, a big issue for them. The, uh, the tough part is, is until we really start getting sto- uh, snowstorms in, and we have the new hangars, we now have a new facility there. There's gonna be some logistics working out, and then I'm, I'm not the one personally doing it, or coordinating it, so uh, that's gonna be also the tough, because it's gonna be left up to the field side, uh, culture aviation, and Hangars West, and everybody else out there. We currently have texts where, you know, we've done snow removal for years. The, um, the small aircraft apron, even though we call it small aircraft apron, is and the, uh, larger that. I'm, I am adding some complexity, doing the, where we're adding our field farm, and I think there's just gonna be a lot of things we'll have to work around and change that how we've done it past, as a result of the new infrastructure and of course, uh, the hangars.
Yeah, and, and, and I can see that, and, and the snow removal is not cheap. And I can see us getting into a little more expense that are somewhere, whether it's where that expense falls, I don't know, but it's, it's, it's concerning.
It is, and, and until we kind of see it in action too, I mean, we can kind of want.
Exactly.
But, I mean, now we have a four hundred, hundred and twenty-five building, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a farm that we're gonna have to work around. That's new roads, and we're kind of shifting up how we access airport, if those all create new, new, uh.
You know, and I agree with your approach on it, because, you know, we could hire an engineering company to adhere to the snowing.
It's not. So what if our amendment is as simple as the end of, because I get what you're saying, I mean, it makes sense right now, but I see there's, there will likely be adjustments. So we need to build something even that gives us that latitude, kind of towards the end there. Um, in partnership, in partnership with owners or whatever, however you find it with words, but you'll get, you'll get it, but in partnership with them and subject to county policies, since, you know, it could be adjusted, something to that matter. I just think, I know you're good enough with words to understand that, if that makes sense.
I would like to be a big advocate for Hangars West with this. I, I have no objection, and I think that there's no harm in, in ironing this out. We are, they are at a, uh, a tough point of wanting to get CO. This amendment needs to saw these signs that they get their water meters, get their CO, they move on, they've done a substantial investment in the airport, so if I would make the suggestion, if there's no objection that, that you guys are able to approve this, and then include that we, we iron some of those, those out, that way I can then, I can let the other pieces that, the other part of the body of this, one is the creation of the condominium, the approval of the, the additional area for the on-site wastewater treatment system, those are very crucial to them getting their CO, and I want to make sure we don't, we don't hold them up in the process of, because of, because of some, some hard burn, anything like that.
I agree with you, a hundred percent. I'm wanting to get this done also.
Yeah, so I, I would, I'd love to craft that, and then that leave, I could, uh, and I, I could work with, uh, Vicki and Dawn, and of course, uh, Hangars West and their attorney, make sure we get that ironed out, but knowing the, the main, the viewpoints in this, we're, we're okay with it, and then, and we kind of figure that language up to be upon acceptance, is that okay?
So, so my thoughts are exactly that. I don't want to hold it up. I think a motion will say, you know, approved with this mo- you know, minor modification, or subject to a modification that satisfies those parties, and that can happen with more conversation. Done. So let's move it on. I don't, I mean, you can't sign a contract and then come back and change it without having another modification.
Well, now, and we also, I would recommend is that you actually just do it, because we, uh, to that, and, and we're back to the same part, but they're not gonna be able to get their job in there. Or you would, do, I know, if they, I mean, what's the worst case scenario? It doesn't follow that amendment, if this amendment right here doesn't suffice. Remember, you still have a little evidence, so either party could say, I want another amendment to adjust this piece of it.
I just pointed to not here to have a conversation with, online. I, I'm not okay with it. It should be simple. Ask them for two, can they, wouldn't be okay with it and run with it? That's my thought. So that's, read me how the motion, how you have the motion, please.
So it reads correctly. Um, move to approve the EEO RBC EEO or Colter Field, we build ground lease, we met along with Hangars West LLC with that amendment. Should you guys have any?
I'm second to say. I bet I'm way, I've stopped it already, sorry. Spoke too much today. Spoke too much today. I don't want to be difficult. I don't think, yeah, sorry.
I just, I'm, I'm just saying that it's. And it would be something that would need to go through the county tree. They have a legal representation, you have a little presentation. Whatever you want to do and then.
So if we do this. Or that the motion is right now. People have, it will postpone, it will. It will have to go through the attorneys and come back to us.
Well, they signed the agreement as it is. They've already executed the agreement as it is. So. They give it, it was just simple. We asked them to execute and then. You go execute. So why?
Well, that's news to me, but I'll see signature on here. But nobody had told me that you'd actually find it.
The uh, the attached document, so to stay on time. We uh, we attached the final word document to the agenda items. And that was done. Her request for the, the agenda, we give a hundred, we give the documentation for it to be. Then on, on Monday of this week. They'd sent over the fully executed agreement. And then we attached that to the uh. To the uh, to the gym items. We, we said that, I gave that. Certification to them that I wanted them to send us execution. So I'll get this into a circular. If we sign it, then they can get back. You know, and so they cleared that up. So they'd send that over Monday. We. I fixed it. It, it, I, I.
So I get bottom line is. This has been a mess from the get go, from what I can tell. I'm a new owner here. This has been a mess from the get go. And from all sides and all angles. And I don't know. I mean, I'm not, I do not want to hold it up. I do not. But we've got to find a better way to do business is all I'm gonna say. And so do they is the bottom line. I'm not saying it's more their fault or our fault. It is a mess. And I'm being nice. Um, I, I do not want to hold it up. But we are going to find a better way to do business there. And get these things done a lot more efficiently, effectively, and not put ourselves in this position. That I feel like I am right now, that I don't have a choice. I'm not okay with that. This point, I don't have a choice.
Well, I think your option is you can table it. And then we can send the, and then back to them and say, well, they signed that. And then re-present it so that it's done. You know.
That they were picking it up. That we're holding it up. And I don't want to create that.
That's happened before in, before the horse. And maybe it's better to just draw the line and say, no, this isn't gonna proceed forward. Let's drop on here. Back up, we make the, whatever it is that would make the commissioners, the board happy. And, you know, for the investment, for the better business of the county. You know, I think it's one of those things. We've done this throughout the process. It seems like. We've set something and then we've had to back up. They've set something, they've had to back up. You said it's been on both sides of the table, but is it better to? Do that and not end up with what you want? Versus just making the decision now. So.
So specifically what you're wanting to change is the snow removal stuff?
Is just to say that it's subject to policy. If policies change in the future, the snow removal policies, that's all I'm asking for. Is that then this doesn't hold us, our feet, doesn't make a mess for you down the road. That's, I'm just trying to keep it from making a mess for you down the road. And maybe it won't, but maybe it will.
And you feel that we can change the policy and this won't affect it? Is that what you were telling me?
Well, I think when the policy changes, policy can be, I'm gonna move it from the left to the right, or I'm gonna move it from the right to the left. That's within the county's discretion. So the policies, you can amend your policies without abetting it. What sets this amendment is, is that a fifty feet is your private property. What we do, if we choose to plow out more, that's fine. But always, we can't plow less than that. How we determine how we want to plow it, just like we have a contract right now with a um. M B O that is gonna do the plowing for us. It's up to us to assign who is going to do that. That's our policy. We have that capability.
Yeah, just to. Just. Because it bothers me a little bit, I guess. It's not the private property. It's their lease property.
It's their lease property. I'm sorry. It's their, their individual response. I mean, it's, I guess I'm, I'm thinking of that is. Nobody else can do anything with that piece. It's done for them.
They're responsible for that fifty foot.
Right, that fifty foot.
But does that preclude us from plowing the snow on it? Because they're responsible for it. We can still plow the snow on it.
Oh, you know, yes, absolutely. So you're saying if we decided Eric wanted to plow up to the door?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Let me read the last sentence. See if it makes sense. Snow may be pu- pushed both, and it says may. Be pushed both north and south of the hangers. And in the case of the. For the south side, snow may be pushed from the access road between the hangers to the east over to the main. North, south access of the road. There's something missing in that sentence there where that semicolon is. Um, but I'm almost thinking, if we just eliminate that last sentence. You've got what you need. They have their fifty feet. Um, are the. I don't know, guys.
What if we do this? What if, um?
It's a stupid little issue.
We have another meeting coming up. We probably could do a special meeting to just confirm that that, that they're okay with that agreement. Um, I think you could say. How about if you said contingent upon that you're gonna approve amendment one. Contingent upon an amendment agreed to by the other. By Hangers West. If they don't agree to that, then your amendment fails to pass. If they agree to it. And the attorneys worked that out, then it would pass. Does that make sense?
I think you can do that.
There's another option here. We go ahead and do this like Kelly's talking. And then I make a motion that we let them have their water. So that they can continue on. Is that an option?
I guess one of the things that um. Might be a suggestion is you guys just strike through the snow altogether. And uh, initial and executed. That would then, what is remaining in the document is, is the key aspects they need for a C O and to create the condominium, the condominium association. And then we could say. Uh, for additional amendment clarification for snow removal.
Would be a amendment.
Yeah, could you do a, the second amendment? The reason that there are clarifications in there is because Hangers West was trying to make sure that they were protected ahead. Uh, there's moved snow to the north, south. You know. Off of it, just don't put it on our apron and we, they can handle it. So if that needs additional clarification. Uh, I believe you can do that. I've seen strike through in, in agreements. And then we put a note that says. The official amendment.
So. I, I, I see where you're going and I like it. So my motion is gonna, but I don't think there's another amendment. It's a matter of our motion and we accept it. Like I make the motion. And either they can initial it because they've already signed it. And it's a done deal. And we've signed it and we're done. So I would just move that we strike. Everything after owners. And H O A. So it's the third sentence up. I see. I don't know if you can, if you, if you've got, do you have? So I'll give it to you. Just speaking the last sentence. Is the amendment that I would like on that. Does that make sense to you, Doug?
Yeah, it does. I'm just wondering how we're doing that.
That's an idea when I said that.
I, I think it is. I, I mean, and I'm no attorney either, but I'm gonna say that we could move it forward that way and see what happens.
That, that really wasn't where I was going. Procedural. Do we need to deny the first motion and make another motion? Seeing what you just said, or can you amend your first motion or?
I can amend the first motion because I basically started into that language.
She did. At the beginning, she said that she was going to move with amendments and now you guys started sending it.
So I will move an amendment. To be striking the last sentence. In the winter snow.
Second then. So we need to vote on that.
Correct.
Will that work?
I believe it will.
Okay.
It covers what we need to go on and then. If uh, in my viewpoint. If they, they throw a. Uh, their arms up and they say, no, not accepted. Well, then. Then it goes to the attorneys and then it's not on our, our shoulders that we, we held this up one more time. But that's, that's my personal.
Yeah.
And this isn't a hard, I mean, it says may. So, okay, I'm done. Holding everything up. Sorry.
So if, so what they're being held up on. Is the water meters to continue with their final. Is that correct?
They, they have three key factors in this amendment that's needed to add to their additional ground. Uh, one is that they have the additional permission for their onsite wastewater system.
Right.
That they have the right to create the condominium association. And then of course, by having that this, when this gets signed and they, they have the right to onsite water system and. Then they can, we can then not hold them up with, given the town, the letter says, please issue them the water meters. And they have the water meters and then they can then send that to the building official to get certificate occupancy application of the building. And then they can begin that condominium creation.
Right. So, just so I understand, when we do this, that lets them do those three things. Without that, this, they can't do those three things.
Right.
Thank you. Um, okay, let's uh, vote on the amendment. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Now let's vote on the original motion.
As amended.
As amended. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Eric can all, I'm sorry to be a pain in the neck, but. I do a good job of it. Sorry.
Okay. Excuse me.
I was gonna ask you, Eric, can I want to stay there for the next?
I'm, I'm hanging out. He's got line item H and then all.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, I guess this one's me too.
You don't get off the hook.
I'm gonna go back there, take a nap.
Okay.
After the last one.
Business line H.
So this is another one of those, I'm really not comfortable making a motion until we talk about it. Um, cause I don't understand what it really does. Um, I'll move to consider the executing the B L M, Bureau of Land Management request. For relinquishing of grant. C O C dash nineteen six, three, three. Communication site logo. It's a motion to consider it.
Okay, I'll second it for the purpose of discussion. Yes, sir.
Yeah. So we have two leased sites on Logo, which is the, down here to the uh. The west here that we use as communication site. Um, we have the original one, which is, is this and it is uh, expiring twenty twenty-five. Um, what we did was when we built the new tower communication site, we. Uh, it moved out the old, there was a, a shed and a smaller tower site. And then what we did was we went and we built our new tower site, our new building. And that lease is, is uh, through twenty forty-five. It's B L M. And part of that agreement with B L M is that. Uh, once this came up, there would be no renewal of this lease and that we would have um. No. Structures or equipment or anything there. And they would then accept that as, as uh, as, as done with. Uh, I did a tour site with Katie Day with B L M. And we went up there and she inspected it and said, all looks good. There isn't an old. You know, rusted old tower there. And then we're just basically giving this lease, letting them expire and relinquishing back to B L M. They're done.
So that was contingent on the new lease that we turn this one back?
Yes.
Okay, why is it a grant?
B L M, garbage and land granting. Um. How they administer those type of sites is why it's considered a grant. It's not a dollar grant.
Different meaning. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Cause I'm like going, why are we releasing the? Yeah, we got a lot of stuff going on up there. So, okay, thank you.
Okay.
There's two.
Any other discussion?
Learn something new every day. Oh, so let's see. So I moved consideration of.
Now I think you have to.
So we're gonna. Let's vote on that. Cause we, it's a motion. Right?
Not go through is the same thing if they open it for discussion and then vote on what they discussed, we're gonna all do our motion?
I don't like that consideration thing, but um, okay, so. Okay, so Mister Chair, I would move an amendment to my motion.
Motion on the table.
Yeah, so I'm moving an amendment.
Right.
Move an amendment to strike consideration. And replace it with approve. Execute, executing that B L M.
Good. I'll second that. Will that work for you, Vicky? Eric, good. Okay, let's vote on the amendment. Aye. Motion passed. Now let's vote on the. Motion.
Over ten.
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Motion passed. Good. You don't get to go anywhere yet. Okay, let's move on to line item B I. Discussion of the direction of the Powell Park Broadband Tower.
So um. Apologize if I go too far back or, or too much in, into detail. So first is definition. Um. The Powell Park Tower can be referenced into, basically it gets referenced with three names. One is the Powell Park Tower. The second is Schultz Tower, given the lease agreement for, for the tower spacing. And then also within our network systems, we call it County Road one twenty-seven Tower. This tower is um. Was built under a um, project that we did within the broadband network to develop. Uh, secondary power sites to expand the broadband. Um, network system, the fixed wireless system out into Rio Wanka County. Uh, that was outside of our primary tower sites and also outside of our fiber network. This tower is um, I think it's approximately forty foot tall. It has what's called a, a back hall, which means. It has a satellite dish on it and we call it radio backing, but it has a dish on it. And it receives uh, a point-to-point. Communication from Logo Tower Site. And then from there, it has two sectors. Uh, these are radios that are on top of the tower. And they provide wireless internet to people within. Line of sight of that, that tower. So then they have a radio on their house. And these access points then distribute that. Network, the, the frequencies to do wifi to those houses. Uh, the site also because it does not have utility power, in which, you know, there's no power. Uh, the site also because it does not have utility power, in which, you know, there's no power lines to that tower. It has a solar side, uh, power system to it. And so that amounts to uh, two sections of solar panels. Those tied to, uh, a main control system that then manages the two battery banks and the recharging of those battery banks and the power. This power is then utilized to power the equipment that uh, is needed for the access points in the back hall. So you open a, a secondary cabinet. There are what is called POEs, so power rethernet. And there's also some additional, um, conversions for, cause the, the power coming off the solar is DC, so there's some equipment in there. We have about twenty-four subscribers that was on this tower prior to the lead and elk fire. The, uh, the subscribers are both on the, the two different sectors. We, uh, kind of going back to the date, I think it was about, I don't have, um, I think it was probably about that later part of the week of August seventh that we saw the net where those radios go down. And then it was the week of August eleventh that we confirmed through photos because we still cannot go up to the site and actually see, but we used a, uh, spotting scope and could see that the, the radios had, uh, experienced damage on the tower site. Um, we weren't able to actually go up to the site until the week of, I believe, August eighteenth, we went up. We did an inspection. Essentially, the steel part of the tower is good, the tower, its platform, the mounting brackets for the, uh, for the, uh, uh, solar panels, the cabinets for the batteries, the cabinets for the equipment are all in, in good shape and do not need to be replaced. However, everything else inside for both the solar power and, and the radio equipment is, it's been burned or melted. And of course, even if it doesn't look like it, you're not sure quite what's going on. Uh, we reached out immediately to, uh, Thin Air Communications, which is our provider of the cambians for the radio side of it. And, uh, Thin Air Solutions, which were in the solar side of it, or estimates, it took them a little while to get those estimates to us about, about a week and a half, two weeks. Um, and so we've now received those. The overall repair summary for that is it's about, when they're estimate has twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-three cents for the repair of the solar system. Solar power system repair. And I, I apologize, Castle Rock Microwave is the ones I don't think. I think Castle Rock is the site for the radio equipment. And they've given us an estimate quote of sixty-five thousand, five hundred and two dollars and seventy-three cents to repair the radio equipment side. Uh, they're expecting a lead time on the equipments, uh, between four to eight weeks. And then after that, they, uh, there's a lead time of deployment of eight to nine weeks from, hey, we got equipment, we're now ready for a team to go up and deploy it. Uh, we now have it up and deployed, now we have it back and, and working, and now we have, uh, internet being provided to our subscribers.
So the total on that, do you have the total?
About ninety-five, roughly.
That's okay.
Yeah, about ninety, ninety-four, yeah, ninety-five thousand dollars total prepared. And that's, that's assuming there's no contingency, it's, so we get the site, we're cutting it out.
So, excuse me, sorry. Um. Do, okay, so twenty-four people that were using it, they've been down for at least a month, right?
Right.
So do we know what they're doing in the meantime, or?
We.
Power or for internet? Okay. Okay. So I guess I would, I mean, I, I've heard from a few of them. And I know some of them want it back up and going, given that cost. And given what technology is available today, I think we need to have a conversation with more of them. So what if we did a, I don't know if it's a work group or a hearing or whatever, to hear from those twenty-four people? You know, kind of what, we could just have a conversation, I want to just have a conversation about what, what the options are, if we showed them different options? And then what would work best for them? We'll never satisfy everybody, we know that. But what would work best for most people as well as the county taxpayers? Or covering it, does that make any sense?
Well, I like the idea of, of letting them come in and, and voice their opinion. Um, it gives us a, uh, line in the sand, whether they, they have an opportunity to come in. They may not, if they don't, then they've had their opportunity. If they do, then we can evaluate their conversation and, and, uh, move on. Where are you at, Eric?
I think that, uh, I, you know, in support of the board, um, I think, um, this is a complex issue and so understanding where they're at, cause the last thing we would want, of course, is to put resources and, and money into repairing the site if they've already found alternatives. And they experience managing the broadband. Uh, we get, we get calls if there's disruptions of ten minutes, so there's, there's a pretty low threshold of, of, um, of expectations for us maintaining that network. And so, uh, this is a complicated, this is not something we'd ever thought. You know, and so I think having them come in and voice and seeing where are they at? I mean, there's probably a number of them that just, you know, there's many options. Especially with low orbiting satellite internet, it didn't exist when the power was constructed and put in place. Um, that's just becoming more and more of a better solution than, than fixed wireless, especially given solar power. Um, and so they might have already, well, you know, this is, I was on the fence anyways, cause I needed better internet and this was the one that kicked me over, so of those twenty-four subscribers, there might be a certain number that's already moved on. I think that is good, that's, uh, good data for us to know and, and would help on the decision of where we want to go.
And I, uh, I don't always understand this, so are they all county customers or do they go through Cimarron? Is that, is that an option?
The majority, yeah, so, um, when discussing network and, and then of course, internet service providers. Uh, the network is, is always us. We're, we're the one providing the connection, managing of that, for the network. And then however they can choose to go through Rio Wanka broadband, but as the internet service provider or Cimarron, majority of these customers are Cimarron's customers. And so, um, they, they go through and they, you know, and then we, we collect wholesale on, yeah.
So we probably need to have Cimarron as part of that conversation as well.
Yeah, they would be invited for sure.
Yeah, I guess that's where I was.
And Cimarron was notified of the outage.
Yeah, so they were, they were notified immediately. Um, thi- this being such a new aspect, you know, we, we were very honest with someone and said, listen, um, uh, tower's down, we know it experienced damage, we knew it was due to fire. What that extent was, you know, for a while, I mean, when we got there, some of the equipment was still on. And, and so it was like, well, how much damage is there? We didn't know. And so until we got there and it got saved and then we got it in and we said, okay, now we're gonna need to do, reach out to our partners and figure out how much this event costs and how much needs to be redone. Uh, we've notified them, but we've also not had many answers for them until we've had this conversation, of course. There's also some complexity with our insurances and, and female response and, you know, you guys have been in the meat of that. And so there's those, those aspects too of it. And, and so we, we've really not had a lot of information to give them because we, we didn't have.
So I think this conversation leads to a much larger conversation. And I'm gonna try and explain what I'm talking about is when the county decided to, uh, do broadband within the county, it was a good deal because we were one of the first counties in the United States to do it and we did a pretty good job of it. Um, but we use these radio towers to do that. And at that time, there was no other technology to do it. Had the technology that we have today with the low orbiting satellites been available then, we would have never done it that way. Because it doesn't make sense to put that much money into a system to give somebody internet that they could get way cheaper. The county essentially, uh, used grants and stuff to get internet to people in remote areas that cost thousands of dollars. And we would have never done that had we knew, known what was available today. So where I'm going with that is because of the technology that's available today, I'm not sure that it is in our best interest to keep the rest of our towers up. I think that we need to have a work session to discuss this with the public and figure out what our, what our, uh, most economical way is to get down the road. And, and, and I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the whole county. I don't think that, that, uh, it behooves the, uh, county to provide services for a very few in the future that cost thousands of dollars when they can get it for hundreds of dollars themselves. So I'd like to get us a work session figured out that we can discuss this with the public and get a direction for Eric to move on. Where's that, Eric, where are you at with that idea?
I would appreciate that. Um, we have a lot of day-to-day operational decisions that I have to make for the team. And, and having a pathway forward on how we, we manage this and, and how we inform our subscribers uh, would help in us in building in the efficiencies, cause I mean, technology's moving and, and demands on, on internet by our subscribers is getting more and more expansive. And, and you know, the tough part is, is, um, within the, the fiber, it's, we have a much more option array that's, uh, a lot easier to deploy and, and, you know, much better return on investment for, for us in the broadband, but fixed wireless is, is a tough one. And then you have this new emerging, or not new, but, you know, the, the emerging accessibility to the low orbiting satellite network systems that didn't exist when we first deployed the fixed wireless. So I am full support of that.
And it, it's my understanding that the fiber that we're using now, they, in the future, there is nothing out there that anybody can think of at this date that's any better. So the fiber in the future, we can't see an end to it. There might be someday, but right now we can't see that.
Yeah, and in telecommunications, fiber is key. Uh, even when you're deploying a fixed wireless system, uh, you start with fiber because that's how you're able to increase that trunk line. And then, you know, uh, for the foreseeable future, when you have that connection. And we tried, we tried a number of different ideas to get fiber at every address in Rio Wanka County. We tried it in our CPF grant option that was well within that grant to to make that lofty goal of getting fiber to every address, knowing that that's, that's the ultimate gold standard for Rio Wanka County that we want, we'd love to achieve. We again did a, a valid attempt in the V, given all the many stipulations they had to try to expand that, that our fiber network, knowing that that's the ultimate. Um, it's not without trying and exploring many ideas that we not tried to get fiber out, we're just in a very, um, challenging geographical area that, that makes those kind of things. And that, that's also partly into why the fixed wireless is so difficult. That's without my aside, you don't have that.
And, and we just need to recognize that Rio Wanka County has been a leader in this and we just need to keep thinking forward. That's Ricky.
I was just gonna mention that same thing about going after the grants that we did to try and, try and increase the, the fibers of the home footprint in both communities, globally, Grand Ranchway. That doesn't mean that it, you know, another grant may present itself that says, you know, you can, you know, it'll now be feasible for us to push that fiber out further. Even if I chose at my house to go to, um, Starlink, Starlink, I always forget, I was I know, whatever, but anyways, um, if I chose to do that at my own personal residence and then they end up running fiber or there's an opportunity that fiber's gonna come right by my house, through the power line, through ground, whatever that is. It would still be better at this point for me to say, hey, I can switch off that and then go on this. You know, it, those funding decisions come up as technology, of course, changes and increases. But like he said, fiber's the gold standard, so.
Well, I did, just final comment before we move on. If in this, it, it makes sense to me that if we don't have to spend thousands of dollars on radios to provide one person, that we would have more money to expand our fiber. We could use the money more wisely. Anyway, anything else? Anybody have any discussion on that? Okay. And let's move on. Are you finished, Eric? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um.
Thank you, Eric.
Let's move on to line item business J.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move approval of a letter, ratification of a letter of support for the Northwest Colorado Outdoors, um, twenty twenty-five regional partnership. Call it RPI, implementation grant application.
I will second that.
So that is, um, regional outdoor partnership. Um, is a effort, I guess I would call it, that the state has, is pushing. They created a regional partnership initiative, state level program, very similar to the Colorado Water Plan. And then they are, in that, they have identified certain air, all areas grouped them into regional regions. And they're calling regional partnership initiatives. And this is, um, some people look at it as a hundred percent recreation. Um, our take on it, when you, when they came and presented to us, um, is it's about conservation, recreation, and he said, keeping agriculture on the ground. Um, and I reference that because I've also, I haven't read it, every word of it, but I am told that agriculture is included in the statewide report twenty-seven times. So they do think that it's a value. Um, so, long story short, it was an effort started. It wasn't having very locally controlled, so we requested that it come back to the local level. The county, and our county and Moffett County are in the same region. And so we have, uh, AGNC, Associated Governments of Northwest Colorado is, um, the fiscal agent on that. And we are in the process of getting ready to start doing public meetings to verify what people really want to do in our area so that we can qualify for the fifty million dollars in GOCO funds that could help us do projects in this area. So this letter was looking at next year's funds. Was quite challenging to get that right because we haven't, while there's a lot of, there has been some work done that has not been guided much by locals. And then we have a number of local plans that are out there. Um, but we tried to word it so that it was fairly, um, open and that we, okay, we think that people will support this, but if they don't, we would look at these other options too. So this was just a letter um, that we wrote in support of that effort to try to get money for next year. And it made it through the first round and now we're being asked to come and do a presentation the end of September, so. Long story for short line.
Yeah. Okay. You wanna, you roll call, please? Aye.
Aye. Hi.
Hey, let's move on to line item business K.
I move the ratification of a letter for public public comments to the Colorado Energy Office regarding the evolution um evaluation and assessment of local government processes for the citing of commercial clean energy and energy transmission project projects draft report.
And Reese did this. Well, I want to second that motion. So do you want to, one of you guys needs to talk about this because I'm.
So um it's basically for us, it's solar energy, but they're also looking at windmills and so forth. Um, one of the things, I'm trying to think of a conversation that I had with the Delta County Commissioner. Um, one of the come, I think one of the specific comments that Reese made in there was in regards to the cumulative impacts of these, so that if there's one, you know, if there's one that's a hundred acres or one that's five hundred acres is one thing, but by the time you add ten of those, that's a very strong cumulative impact, which of course oil and gas has to deal with um and address. And so we want to make sure that that's addressed. And we want to make sure that local control is still in control is the big message. And yes, Reese wrote the letter for us and submitted that in conversations with the Delta County Commissioner that's very involved in this and CCI.
So just to give you an overview, we are not in support of that. I'm gonna read you a one thing that Reese put in this letter. It says, this report is being utilized in conjunction with the state of Colorado's energy goals. And it is placing a burden of the delivery on the rural communities like Rio Blanco County without giving the local governments the authority to manage resources appropriately. So it's stuff that is being pushed down to us. We're, we're trying to push back a little bit. Anything else? Okay. Would you? Okay. Hi.
Hi.
Um, let's move on to line item business I or L. L.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve, we're gonna hear about it, um, the bid award and contract for the twenty twenty-five Rio Blanco County pavement marking project to Branson Traffic Control, Inc., doing business as Branson Roadworks.
I'll second that for the purpose of discussion.
You'll be able to talk about it a little?
Please.
Uh, very low bid this year, but I, my due diligence, they appear to be a very reputable company and they're on the grango, they're a long ways away. But uh they were hungry. They just lost a big job. Uh, and uh in lieu of uh laying off their people, they're trying to do whatever they can to keep their people working. But anyway, it uh we saved at least forty thousand dollars on this, on this bid, so it uh
What's your amount?
Yeah.
What's the amount?
Hundred and seven.
How many bidders did you have?
Three.
Where's the high one?
Hundred and fifty-nine, I believe it was.
And you did your due diligence on the company? But.
Yeah, they're, they appear to be very good, very people, people.
Good.
Okay, and so we're paving where, or not paving, but striping.
Uh, well, I can't remember all the roads, but I was gonna do all of County Road Eight, but we're gonna have to skip about four, five miles probably in there that where we've got flooding issues.
Hmm.
No sense driving it from having to then scrape it off. Uh, uh County Road Four and the Landville Road are all the new uh tuck seal projects this year. And then I was gonna do uh fifteen, uh ten up the river. Seven, seven, six, and thirty-nine.
Much of ten is paved.
Uh, it's about a little over two miles, I think.
Yeah, most of that is dirt.
From, yeah, from uh County Road Eight over to seventeen is paved and then where it goes on it. Um, it's
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad you got him.
Would you please call the roll? Hi.
Hi.
Good, let's move on. Business line item M.
It'll be a huge one up.
Hey. Uh, and we just got these, so I'd like to show you guys these. This is um brought in um eight twenty-six. This is the, just wanted to examples of why we would like to see a magnet out at the landfill, uh that hooks to the uh trackhoe. Uh, this is a bunch of I-beams and metal that was brought in on a roll-off. So the guys have to get out and manually and you know, hold this up and get it moved to recycle or to the basin bin over there. Um, where with the magnet, we can keep the people out of there. They just go over there, hook onto it, energize the magnet, and then uh get it over to the recycle stuff and it's got those claws. Um, right now, we're, we're in the process of uh processing quite a bit of the concrete that's been brought to us from Chevron.
Hmm.
Um, over raising it down. And we just, last week, we worked half a day toward the magnetic belt again. And because some of the rebars get through um that magnetic part of the um shredder was supposed to, it does help, but it doesn't get that. Um, and then we like to use it to build roads out there um for the winter, for the bunch of units. Uh, we end up with chunks of rebar and I've gotten all my calls. Sorry, we just, I just got the picture yesterday. Little chunks of rebar that'll get through there and that's hard on the tires for the uh roll-offs stuff to go into the landfill. But it's a, we can get, we've got the concrete up there, we're processing it, we've got all the equipment to process it. This would just take one more step to clean it up. And then it goes into the recycle bin, which uh we get paid for that to haul off. And then I, we can get a lot more of these I-beams, stuff like that out of there and a lot safer. That's the big thing is the safety for the, for the employees out there uh is a, is a big part of it. Cause it's a quick connect for the trackhoe. Uh, when I worked with CAT to make sure that this one was compatible, they have a head that goes right on it. Quick connect with just two hydraulic hoses to connect to it. So it's much safer, they could actually be done on the pad, not down in the pit itself.
So would you turn the uh one on the the shredder recycler off? Not use it?
Um, I think, I think, I would hate to turn it off completely, but uh we would probably go ahead and leave it on and pull what we can off of it and then maybe and then um, but yeah, in my hopes would be that we could get more of that out of there before it even gets to the shredder.
So what's the issue with the tearing the belt? And I thought this was supposed to help. So you wouldn't tear the belt. So if you, if you're gonna continue using it, you're gonna continue tearing the belt.
Uh, well, the, the hopes is we, we get it out of there before it even gets to the shredder. Is what I hope it is. We can, we can sort it a lot better before it even gets into the shredder. So we're not putting the rebar stuff, the pieces with the rebar into the shredder as fast. And then once we do, we can sift through it because the um the magnet has claws on it that we literally drag through and sift through it with the magnet on it and it pulls.
I would actually make a couple of comments on it. Um, one thing, by removing the big pieces of metal, of course, um you're gonna save the solid waste landfill, that spacing. So number one, you're pulling it out of there to preserve your landfill. Then number two, you can go in the bin and then we actually receive revenue for that, those big purchases. The third part to keep in mind is this is an enterprise fund. Um, it is an enterprise fund that um, so this purchase would not affect any other portion of your budget or your balance sheet. It is solely within enterprise. Um, as we have more metal and things that will be coming in from the fires, I only anticipate that this would help sort that to keep the landfill from filling up in the wrong places.
And this, I, I was gonna use the, the funds that were already budgeted for twenty twenty-five to the concrete for the uh gin shed, some stuff like that, that we're gonna look at redoing the scales house next year anyway. So that we do have a budget item that we
Good. Any questions?
No, I just don't see it on my, it's not coming up. So how much are we talking?
Uh, I have the quote here. Uh, it was, the quote is fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. Um, and then there is a side note at the bottom that you're gonna have some hoses and adapters uh anticipated to the landfill. So just right around the sixty-one thousand.
Okay.
And that is in stock, so it's a fairly quick turnaround.
Okay. And they come in and sell it kind of deal or is it just a piece of?
Right up to the, for current uh hexameter. With some hose, just an hydraulic, that fell was controlled, it's turned on and off.
Excuse me. Okay, Mr. Chair, I would move um approving the purchase um to purchase a magnet for the excavator at Solid Waste Landfill. That should have been done.
Please call the roll. Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're down to resolutions. We have none. Public carings, we have none. Let's go to uh update on the current disaster fire situation. Who's going to do that?
I guess. Um, and Callie, I, you know, will defer to the water, but so just to kind of give everyone an idea, because I have no idea how many meetings we've had. Um, August is a blur, September's coming in to be a blur. Um, but the, we've had the state team here, um Colorado Department, public, I'm trying, DHSEM, and I get
Public safety.
Public safety and emergency management here off and on. Uh, the state is helping us to move through getting a possible FEMA public assistance declaration, but that isn't for the homes or individual owners. Wouldn't affect ag necessarily. Um, what that would be is for public infrastructure, utility companies, county roads, bridges, the old Nicker Landville. Um, there's just, there's a lot of damage that has been done because of both fires and then the floods that came in, the rapid flooding that we had right after that, the um so, you know, they're helping us to move that through that. The actual event closed as of, I heard two different dates, Danielle, um who I had, I'm sorry, I had to pop out of the meeting a couple of times to meet with those folks. Um, then it ended August thirtieth, although uh Jim had told us that it was August twenty eighth, I think. Something like that. Whatever they qualify that closing date of the fire, so when the leave fire was officially closed, that is what we're looking at for a FEMA declaration. So any resulting floods after that fact may or may not be covered, probably not. Um, but that flooding that was in that time period up to the fires will possibly be included. We're challenging, trying to get the two fires linked. Right now, they're two separate fires. That will be critical to try and get that infrastructure, you know, combined as one incident. Um, right now, they are two separate incidences, both two separate incidences have fire and they have flood. So working through all that has been critical. Um.
And excuse me, but the advantage to getting them combined is so that we get our numbers up to qualify. Thank you.
Um, yes, that's a critical part to it. Um, we did an infrastructure tour yesterday and with and divided up into two teams because we have significant issues on both sides of the fence. One is infrastructure. One is, Callie, your group is water, but
Watershed and natural resources.
Watershed and that.
Watershed, so good.
Um, and I can speak to the infrastructure tour. Uh, we were very, um, I don't wanna say it was good news. Um, but the infrastructure damage is significantly more than what the HSEM was anticipating. And they said typically they go out on an event and people are saying, oh, it's really bad, it's really bad, it's really bad. And they get into it, they say, huh, it's really not that bad. Um, you know, this doesn't look like it would qualify. This doesn't look like it would qualify. We started the tour out up on, by Lake Avery and then came down, went out thirteen, thirty-three builds out uh old landfill and then down five, then came back into town. And of the size that they were looking at, um, the overall consensus of their entire team was this is a lot more than what they were anticipating. They were, which is that a good thing? No, because I would rather us not need a dime of FEMA assistance. Um, but right now, it, that's what we're, we're trying to go for. Um, that application process has to be, is a quick turnaround. And so I've not focused at all on the budget, on letters, on doing anything but trying, and I'll be working with Antina and that as well as Callie's team to try and get things documented to make our case as presentable the process will be. We'll submit our application. The state will then take that, they have till September thirtieth, twenty eighth to thirtieth to submit that to the governor's desk. The governor then will have to choose whether to submit it or not to the president. Um, upon submitting it to the president, then the president can have any length of time to approve whether they want to go through FEMA or not. So now is a critical time period for us to make sure that we can put the most pressing issues and case of why we need this assistance to, to the governor and ultimately for him to be able to forward to the president. So it's been fast and furious and constant moving. I thought it would be done when the fires were over. That is not the case. I have put in just as many hours since August thirty. Um, so it is definitely getting a little wearing.
Yeah.
So anyhow, that's where we're at with that, at least my side. So I'll defer to Callie for their structure, their job.
So on the um natural resources and watershed side of things, um so the, the ranchers and so forth, that way, let's see, we'll back up. So there are two surveys that are out that I want to encourage anybody and everybody to fill out. If you have any kind of business, need to fill out the economic survey. Um, and both of them are on the county's website. The other one is the agriculture survey because it covers things that other businesses don't have, like cows and fences. Um, and we need to get those completed and there's just not that many people that are filling those out. But in order to know what kind of assistance we need from the outside, wh- whether it's from for individuals or for the whole, we have to know what they need. Um, so, um, we need those filled out. Then from, and so the, the economic development side, we've asked Caitlin um Cook, thank you, and Carly Pumson, thank you, um, from the town to help us um with that side of it, since that's really not a huge expertise that I have anyway. Um, and they're doing a good job. And then um they're gonna be, um they are reaching out to Sasha and others as needed to, to move forward with that. On the ag side of it, um, the Conservation District and Reese are really leading that effort um, working with NRCS and FSA. So long story short, if agriculture producers have been impacted, they need to reach out to FSA ASAP. Get all my acronym in order. Farm Service Agency as soon as possible. Um, and then, um, cause those are gonna be individual basis. Um, then the tour wise and watershed wise, um, water quality is a big concern. Um, and of course, what it will do to the river. So it's, one example is Downriver where that's come across and went into the river. There's a pretty big fan that's come out there, which is gonna There's a pretty big fan that's come out there, which is gonna drive that river right straight at the bank. And I'm wondering about that bridge that it comes into, and it's gonna drive it right to the bridge. So that's infrastructure issues. Water quality issues, definitely. The reservoir and Rangeley are already seeing those impacts. I'm told that even the town of Rangeley's, um, water treatment facility just smells like you just dumped water on a campfire. It, and they're struggling. And, um. So that group that was there, we also had C D P H E, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, was one of the guys that was on that tour. To get them engaged and help Rangeley, because Rangeley's gonna have to have some potential assistance there. So. There'll be that piece, but not only the reservoir, um, the Kenny reservoir, but then there's the issue with the, um.
Thank you.
Like Avery. And so, and I don't know, CPW staff that was with us really didn't know the answer there. Is that's gonna shed a lot of that debris off into that reservoir. Um, so are they going to close it off and try to hold it? And then some of the state guys talking about potentially trying to dredge some of that out? Or do they leave it open? And let it go, which it'll go to the river directly. So there's pros and cons both ways. Probably the biggest thing is with the E W P money. From NRCS that we were just talking about, and they will work with the state as well. Is doing a lot of catch ponds and stuff in each one of those drainages, particularly above Lake Avery. That looks like a good possibility there. I don't know how you build catch ponds in the White River to keep it from going to the, um, to the one down there. So anyway, water quality. At trailer draw, there we go. Um, but, but I think that there is potential for doing some of that kind of stuff in, in Piant's Creek and stuff, and just trying to keep it from getting down Piant's Creek that goes down yonder. So.
And the ditches.
And the ditches. Oh, my gosh. Those guys that have been hit time and time again, because we did see multiple homes or outfits, I guess I would say, one home that was darned close to, um, actually right up against it, but didn't hurt it, I don't think. Um, but coming out of those draws and filled up crels, filled up barns, um, ditches, fields and so forth that way. So. There's a lot of, and the worst problem is it's just, you clean it up this time and it's gonna be there again. Um, so that's the conversation to be had.
Just one more point on that. Um, so I reached out. One of the things that our state, D H S E N said, we gotta find out if there's any historical um, things that have been destroyed. That's a whole nother piece to this. Um, you know, is that aspect of, were there, um, you know, old schools that were damaged or anything? And so I reached out to Teresa Reed Ruckman, and bless her heart, she jumped right on it and initially got me. And I will be submitting that. I talked to Jim, uh, from the, the Regus, the HT, or actually, the Hill Times published an article back in twenty twenty-three about the, the big, where they branded the hill, you know, the RH, the giant, that we've all driven by a million times. It was not on the historical register, but since it was actually created, um. And when was it? I'll have to look back in the article and see when that was done. It was.
Long, long time ago.
Yeah, I mean, it actually would qualify had we registered it. Um, however, that doesn't mean, they won't get, necessarily get funding for it, but it does draw the attention and to make the case that we had significant resources that were damaged in this fire. Um, so that is a, a critical piece. The, um, the house that was destroyed, um, on, you know, the, um, the ball house, I think is what, what they actually called it. That was actually slated to get registered on the historical registry.
Oh, really?
The reason why is the house and the barns were, the barns were for sure constructed in the early nineteen hundreds and would have qualified for that. Um, and the house they weren't quite sure on, but the actual, that whole homestead was a homestead, original homestead. So, um, you know, those are records that we will include in our story, and that was the thing that D H S E M said. Some of this will or will not qualify to help us push us into that FEMA declaration. But it dang sure is something, a story that we need to tell and preserve for history. Um, so anyhow, it's just, there is any thread that you can think that you pull on, there's more to it. So, you know, it's just those two pieces. I thought Terry will be putting together something as far as the economic impacts of the museum has suffered. Um, and then she's continuing to try and find little niches that says, you know, could there have been a Wiki up somewhere? Could the, you know, what have we truly lost in these fires? And that's it.
Good, okay. So let's go to Road and Bridge update.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to make a motion for a, do a motion, a request for some adding.
Don't blame you.
My phony.
Either that or not to have to sit there so long, right?
All the meetings I've been to, this is one of the longest. So, um, uh, Rangeley, uh, this past month, hauling, been hauling a lot of gravel. Uh, pit run, uh. I can go through all of the roads if you would like. We did some spot graveling on one sixteen and seventy-three. And, uh, they were doing quite a bit of work on one sixteen, kind of reshaping that. The road a little bit in places, some of the big curbs or corners. Uh, they did, uh, culvert cleaning and cattle guard cleaning on one oh nine. Uh, hauling reject material on twenty-five. Uh, reshaping the road and filling in washouts and that kind of thing. A lot of grading, uh, mortar graders, uh, one sixteen, twenty-seven, seventy-three, one oh nine, eighty-nine, ninety-nine. Uh, they've been doing a lot of, uh, gravel pit work and red wash, uh, grizzly and four inch material there. And, uh, they had some flood, uh, uh, cleanup on one oh two. And we actually, early in the month, we sent some guys down, uh, in trucks to help them haul the ground. And anyway, that's, they've been busy. And for Meeker. Uh, primarily firefighting, uh, we, and all the I don't know how many weeks it was, but recently, then they've been cleaning up, uh, blood and debris. And yesterday finally kind of got done with the, their cleanup on five. So the next rain, uh, we can be right back down there. Like you say, this is, it's gonna be, uh, all through next year, at least, I think for.
They say a minimum of, minimum of three years is what they were telling us yesterday.
Yep. They, they may get a little bit of growth next year, but it's not gonna not gonna save us much for.
Yep.
So that's gonna be an ongoing problem for us, for Road and Bridge guys. Uh, we did have to replace a, a culvert that actually burnt, where through a plastic coat, well, H D P. On County Road Five. And, uh, and then tomorrow, we're gonna get some asphalt in there and, and patch that. And a couple of other spots in our, using patch.
Was there just one of those that burnt like that?
Yes.
Or that melted or whatever?
Only one that, that melted all the way through, but there was another one that just melted on the end. So we're, um, we're gonna be able to splice out. And, uh, I've had, uh, I had the, uh, chip seal project. We got started up on eight, and then, uh, the fire came along and they, it took me ten days to just get permission for them to go ahead and get their equipment out. Uh, so anyway, they're supposed to be, they were, they're supposed to be back today.
Okay.
But maybe tomorrow, hopefully. I hadn't heard from. Uh, so we gotta initiate, uh, uh, fog seal. And then we'll come down and do the Mesa Road Four and the landfill. I know, I hope as soon as they get here, we can get that done in a week or thereabouts. And I got, uh, the striping, obviously, that you approved. Um. I don't know it. We may try to start it the, the week of the twenty-second. I'm trying to push them back just a little bit, so we have plenty of time to get everything done. Chip seal and fog coat, and then wait a few days, let the fog coat. Sure. And then, uh, I also got, uh, they should be, they fired up their uh, crushing equipment up at Sleepy Cat yesterday. Should be making gravel there. Run away and, uh, gonna try to get, uh, hauling, hauling them a lot of the out as we make it. So that we, because we don't have much room to pile it through, so we can haul it out and use it. And then they, they're, uh, they're needing to do a lot of work up on seven.
Because?
So, yes, so anyway. You'll, you have questions. If not, I'll.
I would just like to say real quick, um, you know, the Road and Bridge crew, the entire crew, and including Solid Waste Landfill, we was out there the whole time and, and they just have worked extremely, extremely hard. I think, I, I know everybody has in that, that respect, but the work and the things, you know, just trying, we set up roads that we still have to uncover and get to, and that was something that we saw on the tour. There are roads that we cannot get to.
We've got three roads that are still closed, twenty-two, seventy-six, and, uh, one twenty-seven. They, they're totally impassable.
And it's not just like one thing. I mean, it's not like, okay, there's just a little section of road. I mean, it is just sections of road at a time and, you know, danger of falling trees. And so it's just, you know, to have to Crystal with another one that has been out and just making maps, G I S-ing, um. What is it called? She was putting them on each little thing that had damage. She was mapping and saying, okay, here's.
Way more, since she's, yeah, she's mapping out all of your onyx.
Onyx.
Onyx is what.
Signing, um, that was burned up, just, and then we have to do warning signs for that. If you're in a flood, this could be a flash flood area. You've gotta be aware. Um.
If you're in Rio Blanco County, you could be in flood area.
If you have, Austin, Rio Blanco. Yep. So anyways, I just wanted to give a shout out, especially, like I said, Crystal and all those guys have just been working extremely, extremely hard. Thank you.
They, they did a good job. They did a great job.
And they're gonna keep doing a good job. It ain't over yet.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good. So let's move on to, uh, county attorney is not here. And the county administrator.
Uh, so just my only update for you is in between fire stuff, recovery stuff. Um, I've done some work on the budget. We continue to have some budget scrubs. We're making headway on shortages. Um, you know, we are by no means done with, with that. There's been no decision. I wanna make sure everyone knows, there has no, been no decision on personnel benefits. That's still in the conversation phase and the tests that we've done so far to budgets, and people have said that. It's been one of those things, even including the commissioner's budget. It's where can we cut? It's gonna hurt. I understand that. Let's figure out where we can to try and preserve what we can preserve. And so by no means are the conversations finished. They're just now starting. That, this would have, had August have gone the way that I would have liked it to have gone, we would have those conversations in August. That didn't happen. God had a different plan for us. Um, but as we continued, we've done the majority of first round scrubs. Callie and I have three more to do on Thursday. Um, no one has left the budget scrubs happy, um, I'm gonna say. They've all seen the potential and said, okay, if I give up this, does that help for the greater good? Can we get to here from there? So we're continuing to do that and, um. Anyhow, so in between, we not, that's where I'm at on that. I have not had a chance to work on anything else. I understand we have some uh, constituents, uh, regarding Columbine Park, trying to schedule a, uh, meeting um, for them to voice their concerns. I have not had that done. Gosh. I had a situation where Mark, uh, had asked me about a public road, uh, situation that he had. Um, and I'm just, I'm begging that, just give me a few more weeks, because this is the critical nature of this beast. It's on God's skin that's got by, uh, September twenty-fifth. So everything else is kind of backburnered until I can get to that point. And then we'll move forward with the rest of budget and all that, that stuff.
Good, thank you. County administrator, or I mean, uh, any commissioner's updates.
Um, first of all, just thank you, Vicky, because I know how much time, energy and lack of sleep you are dealing with. So thank you. Are we not working?
I don't know. It's still going. It was just sleeping. I just wanna know where you guys are, so I can go back into transpose later. Oh, you're all good?
Um, let's see. So it seems like it's been forever since we've had a regular commissioner meeting. So I don't, I just went back through my calendar really quick. Um, this fire recovery and the tour, we've kind of covered that. I think since the last meeting, I've met with Hickinlooper and Bennett senators. Um, primarily to ask for support to do, joining these fires, but we've now learned that that's done at the state level instead of at the federal level. So we do need to, as you had said, reach out to our state senator and representative. Um, to see if they can help us there. Um, went to a C C I meeting, um. The tour was in regards to solar. Um, was good. Delta County has a really cool solar project there, if you wanna, if, if they can be cool, I think that one is. It's on irrigated ag and they are, they have seeded it and they're sprinkling most of it and it's growing pretty good feed for sheep. Um, underneath it. But the one thing that he, they suggested that we keep in mind, should we ever have one, that in your list of things that you're requiring, is that there, um, when that equipment comes in, that it's point of sale. So you get the taxes on when those are delivered. I know we may have a different way of doing it, but that was, Delta said that was critical because they missed that step. And so those millions and millions and millions of dollars that were delivered to California, they got nothing on it.
We're covered there because we have a.
Use tax piece, but, um, and then, um, let's see, there was a second thing that he mentioned. Oh, I can't remember. So I, I did make a note of it. So if we ever go down that road, hopefully I can find it. Um, I've met with Carrie Brennan, is going to be our facilitator for the Regional Partnership Initiative. I, the plan is we will have a meeting, a public meeting before the end of this month. I don't know the exact date. But we will have our first meeting and get that rolling before the end of the month. Um. We've had a number of news folks interested in the county. Um, Reese is covering a lot of that, um, which has been, and I thought he's done a nice job. I did, he and I did then seven news, um, one, I think it was, not nine. And, um, then the other thing more recent, went to Club Twenty last week, Friday and Saturday. Um, I think it was one of the better meetings they've had in a while. Um, Barb, um, Kirkmire, uh, who is a joint budget committee member at the state level out of Weld County. Um, has announced this week that she's gonna run for governor. And we heard her speak on budget stuff. And, um, she's pretty much a no-nonsense get her done, but a very ambitious lady. And so I'm looking forward to learning more about her. Um, comes from a dairy farm, has owned a flower shop, has been a county commissioner, has now been a senator, but also on the Joint Budget Committee. I think she's got a good set of credentials behind her, so I'm pretty excited about her. Wasn't so excited about the Attorney General's presentation. Um, and then we also heard from the Common Sense Institute. Um, and then we also heard from the Common Sense Institute. Has anybody? I was not aware of them. I will be sending out, um, they have done the research on what the Wolf Program has actually cost Colorado. And so that's, but they're, they're digging into that kind of stuff and oil and gas and all the. Oh, and by the way, I've been asking the question, how many staff F T Es have been added? In this, to our state government since this governor took office? Seven thousand. Now that includes the colleges, but that's seven thousand people and we wonder why the state is broke.
Yeah. Didn't they use the mandatory layoffs just recently?
Had a hiring freeze.
Had a hiring freezes and they didn't do that until after the general session or the special session. Um, the other thing, um, B L M ha- did a presentation at lunch with keynote speaker. Um, was, um. I will think of her name because she wrote our land use plan. She wrote it for Karen here. No, it wasn't Karen. It was the one that actually wrote it and then Karen reviewed it for us. I am really disgusted. I forgot her name. Had a really good conversation with her. Her, she is working, um, is the senior policy advisor to the B L M director. So she's doing some really cool stuff right now on, um, all the different things that basically support our land use plan. So some really good stuff there. So that, I'll quit with that.
Okay. I went to, uh, A G and C meeting in Rifle. It was a economic summit. And it was, it was, uh. Eye opening. They, they talked about workforce development and generational strategy and they're, they're, uh. Talked about the youth today, not, uh, there's not as much. Uh, demand for four-year degrees. You get a four-year degree and you never use it. There's a, so they suggested that a lot of kids go out and figure out what they wanna do and, and get a career before they spend the money and time on a four-year degree. Um. What else did they talk about? Networking, collaboration. Economics and in, uh, this end of the county or this end of the state are not doing real well. All the counties are, are hurting. A lot of that's due to our, our governor and what he's doing to us with our oil and gas. And then, uh. I met with a landowner to discuss the right of way stuff for County Road Seventy-seven Bridge. And just trying to get that smoothed out. Uh, we had a fire cooperators meeting. We're trying to get all the meetings tied up with a lot of this fire stuff. Met with the sheriff's office, the Roden Bridge Fleet, weed and pests on budget scrubs. Um, more fire recovery meetings. Met with Ann Chutes to, uh, with their planning and progress on the County Road Seventy-seven Bridge. We're gonna eventually get that done. Um, meant to approve a second, oh. We did a, um, meeting yesterday in the second house on a parcel of land. Uh, spent, uh, time working on the budget and trying to figure out where we're gonna get money for benefits and wages. That's all I've done.
I might just, at the C C I meeting, I was at, they went around the table and had kind of a round table of all the counties. And every county, of course, budget was top of their priority. Um, I would say the majority of them have done hiring freezes. Mesa County is doing. They, they had some creative language for it, but basically they did volunteer retirement upfront. And then their second round was a little more encouraging than just volunteer. I don't remember what they called it. It's kind of interesting, but everybody is having the same issue.
Yeah, I've talked to some other committee trouble with, uh, benefits and, and wages as we are. It's, uh. And, and, uh, the, the horrible part about that is it doesn't look better next year. Um. Okay, we're gonna adjourn the meeting at one thirty-five. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. I don't know what Clint was talking about. He said this was the longest one. We only started at eleven. It's not been bad.
But sometimes we start at nine and it's still going at this point.
The D A, um, increased their budget again. They're up to four oh five, four or five thousand.
Who's that?
The D A.
Oh.
The, for, you know, pay for the tri-county, uh, have our district attorney cover both counties or both. They, it was four oh five. They removed some things and got it down to like four oh one. Then they found an error and backed it back up to four hundred and two thousand.
Four hundred what? So what was the last number?
Four oh three.
Four oh three.
Five oh nine. So I'll have to go back and we will take up, Kelly, I'll show you through that budget.
Okay.
On with Thursday.
Yep. That is only tomorrow, I think.
There's not a lot we can do with it.
Would you like to do some research on seeing if we can find some creative ways to match that N R C A?
N R C S.
Yeah, twenty-five percent that you'd rather not have.
Um. What kinds of things are you thinking, Sasha?
It, well, it really depends. I need to know a little bit more about their sources, um, because. Some, we've been doing state and federal stacking. Um, there are some federal resources that will stack. So a U S D A grant will stack into any other federal grant. So we can, we can use federal sources to match. We're also, um, already researching some philanthropic sources, so private foundation investments into the area to then match. Um, I know, yeah, the Valley Community Foundation is also.
Yeah, they're doing their thing, but it won't, it won't go into the things. We don't wanna take away from it for this stuff.
So again, I don't know, but if you'd like to organize a conversation, Christine and Pauline would be.
I think, again, we've gotta know what we're looking at, but then potentially that would make some sense to do that.
Yeah, you need, you need to know we can get matching money.
Yeah. Strings attached is the key. But yeah, I mean, if, sure. I mean, I guess see what is out there. But this is gonna be for, yeah, you heard what, what the topics are. So yeah, if there's something out there, that'd be fine.
Like, uh, and I had to step out, cause that's when Jim had popped in, but I was curious what they, what, I mean, the match, because I'm just concerned about. Trying to figure out how we would manage that finance, not just the financial aspect of the record, I think, the.
You contract with somebody to do that.
Yeah, if, if we got that, we'd have to use that fifteen percent.
Yeah. And that's a fight.
So it wouldn't come inside.
We can't do that.
We would have to audit it. It would be a part of, have to become a part of our.
Yeah, I'm sure. Well, the whole thing would have to come through us. All of that money has to come through us. So you'd be auditing all of that, but. But the offset is they pay seventy-five percent of all of the, the road and bridge work. That has to be done over the next two years. So that's a pretty big savings for them.
So if we would have done, if the conservation districts would have done it. Does that help us out at all?
No, it really doesn't. I just thought they probably had a little more manpower to do. I mean, that's what they do is grants, but I, and I asked Vanessa to come, but of course I didn't ask her soon enough, but. The fact that, back when I was, back in the day, in R C S and the districts always did that. So when he said fifteen, that's probably about when things changed and the districts quit doing it. Um, it's a matter of what the strength is at the local districts, cause I know that that's, and that's where it should be, in my opinion. Because they're sitting in the office with N R C S.
Well, I was, I was encouraged that they're gonna do the, the fifteen percent to, to do it, so.
Well, don't get too excited about that, cause I'm, the state guys told us yesterday that you will have to do battles.